Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 P. M. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The call, Lord, in this meeting of the town council, the first item of business is announcements. I had put in the written agenda, a note for comments, if any, regarding the annual financial town meeting. I have none unless there's someone who has a comment that we need to make in the public. I've also got an addition to make to the agenda, which is permitted by the Open Meetings Act. However, it's an item that we'll only be able to assign to someone. I'll enter it as new business nine. It involves the receiving of bids for spring roadside mowing. And when we get to that point, I'll make you aware that we'll take a vote to add it to the agenda. And based on the outcome of that vote, decide whether we can assign that to a person to take care of. Next item of business is approval of the minutes of May 5th.
Approval of the town council minutes of May 5th, 2022, unless anybody has any comments or questions on it.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. It is your discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is to consider actions, if any, to donate an antique light to the North Garden Project being carried out by the United Congregational Church as requested verbally by the project leaders. I'd like to point out, this request would add a light where one is, I'll say, missing. I don't think it's missing in the sense that somebody took it, but it's not symmetrical on the commons. There's another one in front of the... Community Center, thank you, that we will be also placing. So what we don't have yet is a sense of what the cost of this light project is going to be. So I'm going to suggest that we evaluate that. And Councilor Matteronis has had a leading role in that, along with the administrator, and that we come back to the council with a proposal on the lighting project and see if we can, in fact, accommodate all of the lights that we're talking about. Does that sound...
Is that a motion? You want to make that a motion, Bob?
I will move that as to defer or the decision on this particular light and make it part of an overall lamp project for the commons.
That Tony and I will be looking into.
Right.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? Welcome, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is to review a request made November 18th, 2021, for the pride flag to be flown on the town hall on June 4th in conjunction with a pride event that's scheduled for that day, June 4th. Let me give you just a bit of history on where we got or how we got to today. Back in November, the request was brought forward to hold a pride celebration in the commons. It included closure of the north side road outside the town hall here, the use of food trucks, and veterans' field parking. All of those pieces were approved as part of that motion. It also sought the display of the pride flag at the town hall. And that item was deferred because at the time, we were in the process of evaluating and deciding upon a flag policy. That flag policy in January was eventually set aside. There was very extensive public input, and both sides of the issue were represented. If I had to characterize the single theme that came across in it was the significance of the American flag to people that responded. And so that's where it stands, but I'd like to hear from others as to your opinions and how we ought to proceed.
Sorry, I'm just settling in here.
Yeah.
If there are comments, you can go ahead. I'm just trying to find something. Sorry.
I think it should just be the American flag. That's just my opinion, and everybody I've talked to from both sides of the issue. Nobody has a problem with the American flag. The only contention comes up when we stop flying other flags. I did some very limited research and found out that there's 96 pride flags for all different variations. So who are we excluding if we just put up the one? Are we excluding other groups? Or is... I don't understand it, to be honest with you. But with 96 different flags, where does it end? And it's unfortunate. It comes to an emotional issue, but I can just see the American flag there. That's the unifying flag for everybody. It doesn't differentiate between the pride, race, religion. It's the unifying flag. That's just my opinion. I think it should just be the American flag.
I will say I disagree with the council president's interpretation of the minutes from the meeting that we had back in November, where this first came up before the council. I'm going to read the motion that was made back then. It said, "Motion made by Councilor Golombeski, receiving a second by Councilor Ariarte Moore, voting all in favor to approve the request for Megan Gonzalez and Jenna Magnuski, co-presidents, and Raul Ariarte de Moore, vice president of Love Wins, seeking permission to hold an event on June 4th, 2022, from 1:00 P. M. to 4:00 P. M. Using the north side of the commons with food trucks and veterans' field for backup parking." This vote approves this request, subject to conformance with license as described in Chapter 6 and the flag policy once established in Chapter 11. So we didn't necessarily table that request. I mean, according to this, we approved the whole request, subject to conformance with Chapter 6 and Chapter 11. Since we don't have a flag policy on the books, we really already have our own working policy based on our past votes, including a vote we took in April to fly the Armenian pride flag, or the Armenian flag, I'm sorry. So I think that, based on the precedent that we've already set to fly both the pride flag last year and the Armenian flag for the last 20-plus years, I think we've already set precedent that we allow other flags to be flown on the flag pole. And in addition, I think it's just the right thing to do. So I'm going to make a motion to fly the pride flag as requested on June 4th.
I'm happy to second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Fly the flag. Any discussion?
I have a discussion. Andrew, you brought up the minutes of November, and it wasn't tabled. I'll ask the solicitor, do you weigh in on that? Do you have those minutes for this, listener?
I have them.
Yeah. What's the question?
I'm just... You said it was tabled. You said it wasn't tabled. I was just wondering if the solicitor could weigh in on that.
I think the motion was made, but any discussion on the flag was going to wait until we have a flag policy. So now that we don't have a flag policy, because none was ever instituted, the general practice is to let the council decide. Now, when it comes to the Armenian flag, they asked to have it flown, and we didn't fly it. The Armenian flag was not flown this year.
We approved the flying of the flag.
No, no. We approved a resolution. We didn't approve flying the flag. So because that's what came up last year. If you can do it for one person, you do it for everybody. So if we're not going to do it for one flag, I don't think we should do it for any flags.
Any other discussion here?
We've already set the precedent for 20 years.
My question was, Councilor, do you see that tabled? Did we, like...
That was the table. That was voted on.
Right.
Yeah, all I see is... I wasn't here.
Yeah.
So if it says, "Vote in November 18th, 2021," semicolon, "flag policy failed to be adopted." I don't see the word "table" anywhere.
Andrew, your interpretation is different?
Of which one?
Of the flag, the pride flag, was not tabled or...
Tabled. Yeah, we didn't table the vote. We accepted, we voted in favor of the request, subject to Chapter 6 and Chapter 11.
Okay.
The literal words are, "This vote approves this request, subject to conformance with license as described in Chapter 6 and the flag policy once established in Chapter 11." So we needed to have conformance with both of those in order to take action on the flag policy. When there isn't a flag policy, and the decision, not only of the council, but the response from the public is, "The council should decide that," that's why I'm proposing that tonight it is ours to decide. It's not something that we have failed to do. Yes, sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, so what you just asserted is a flag call?
Correct.
Okay, just sort of quick. So that's your view that...
That's my assertion.
What was that about? Because now, you said that there's consensus of the American flag at all, in similar common, right? That's what you've taken, but it's not the council's flag policy. The council has a building that is possible.
The consensus is that what we heard in the public hearing was there was no one who said, "We shouldn't fly the American flag on the building." My point is, it was the thing that had consensus. The rest of the suggestions did not have consensus. That's my observation. That's not a statement of the council's position. It is not the council's policy. The council must now take a vote, and one is on the table. Is there any further discussion? Are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
The motion does not carry. Let me be clear of what I am saying about my impression. And that is, when we stood just a few minutes ago to pledge allegiance, we spoke of the allegiance that we are pledging to the country by extension, the town. And then we say, "Under God." And we say that because we're acknowledging there's some power that's greater than we are that is guiding our attitudes. And a person is free, obviously, to choose to say, "I don't believe that," but that's what we're pledging. And then we say, "It's indivisible. Nothing divides us." So it's our obligation, it would seem to me, to make sure that nothing divides us. Finally, it's liberty and justice for all, not for some. It's for all, and therefore, we are saying publicly, "That's what we believe, and that's why we believe it." Yes?
First, I would like to recognize my serious disappointment with the fact that you failed to acknowledge that I was to speak prior to your vote. Second, our email correspondence, homicide due over the last several weeks, really caught me by surprise. In this correspondence, we sought to simply confirm our arrangements. We were told by town administrator Tessa that the matter must be taken up by the town council. Yet, the motion unanimously adopted by this body on November 18th included, quote, "This vote approves these requests, subject to conformance with the license as described in Chapter 6 and the flag policy once established in Chapter 11." When I replied that our request conformed with the policy, given that the flag ordinance was tabled indefinitely, I never received your reply. It has been nine disappointing days without so much as a, "We plan to address this at the next town council meeting." And frankly, the fact that this matter was not at all discussed with the council listener in advance, given that you have had nine days of notice about this correspondence with went to the full council, is a dereliction of your duty. I don't think that it's any secret that several of you and I do not have the same politics, but we've been able to work together for the benefit of this place that we all love so much, to make it a more perfect town, whose benefits are safe, and moves our country for the more perfect union that we are pledging our allegiance to. My experience with each of you in the past has been that you're men of conviction and integrity who honor your word. Beyond any legal requirement, you should be holding to your own word. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I feel strongly, this is a huge disappointment and betrayal in a way, of what happened last year was very memorable. What happened today is a disgrace to me. Councilor Golombeski talks about 93 whatever flags. He hides it behind the words, "My word," or "Who else is he speaking for?" I believe himself. But that is absolute nonsense. If you want to do it, you can do it. And to go to the flag, you're perfectly right what it stands for. But do you have a reasonable reason to believe that we perfected our country yet? This is aspirational, what our flag stands for. It's not what it we had. And that's why fighting for pride flags is critical for the future of our country.
Anyone else?
Hold business three.
The next item of business is a request from Robert Humphrey for the council to offer a status update on a plan for the safe development of Amy Heart Path.
I'll accuse myself.
Thank you.
You know, I want to recuse myself also because I own quite a bit of property on Two-Rod Way, which is, I think, what the exit Bob is alluding to, coming out the north way of Amy Heart Path.
Is it your intention to step away, or are you going to just remain there? Your choice. Doesn't matter. I just want to be sure. Understand.
Do you want to submit a letter of recusal?
Yes, yeah. Where it stands now, there have been two efforts. One is to bring our part-time planner, Allison Ring, into the process to say, "What, where in other towns is this kind of issue dealt with, and how is it dealt with?" Because I'll be, as I think you and I have discussed, it is clear that this will require, unlike a development in which there is raw property that's being divided up and some of it's being devoted to a road, this will require a number of people, I'm guessing it's on the order of 30 or 40 landowners, to agree that their property can be part of a road that doesn't currently exist. There's a cart, I don't have to lecture you on it. You live there, I don't. But there's a cart path that we refer to as the road, and we've adopted and allowed it to be used as frontage by people who have bought property there. We're now faced with the fact that that frontage doesn't lead to a major road or a place that I can, that an ambulance can come easily to. So the question will need to be, at least partially, dealt with by a decision on the part of the landowners there that they wish to do that, is my sense. That's a personal opinion. It's not something that I have socialized. The third thing that we've done is have begun a description of how private roads will be maintained in the town, again, after the fact. These are roads that are neither state roads nor town roads, but are private. And those roads, I would submit, the Amy Heart Path will probably fall into that category. So those are the things that we've done thus far.
I see.
Sure.
Thank you, President Bush, and members of the council, Robert Humphrey, and six Amy Heart Path. I appreciate you putting the matter on the agenda tonight. We were before the council back in October to address our concerns with many of our neighbors. Some of which are here tonight with us. As we have discussed in the past, it was more or less a moratorium on further development of Amy Heart Path because, at the time, the fire chief really wasn't giving out certificates of ownership for the construction of the road. There's been a lot more development on the road over the last few years, and that's what's been our concern. It was major development by Mr. Blong. The problem is, now he has this development, but he can't get to the homework road or to Two-Rod Way or to Old Stone or to any of those roads because of just the shape of the road. So we're asking the council, if there is going to be further development, I would ask the planning board to be advised that the developers should have to fix the road that's coming into them. So that may be going up to Two-Rod Way and making a road safe for trucks to come in and out of. It may be coming out from one of the side spurs off of Amy Heart Path that developers will be getting to. That's our main thing. So we're just asking the council, keep an eye on it. Work with us to have the safety of the road.
Do you think there is general willingness to... Obviously, you'd be speaking perhaps for others that may be here and may wish to speak for themselves. But do you think there's willingness to cede or to encumber a portion of the property in order to create a road?
I can only speak for myself. I think other people may go along with this. Well, I think the answer would be no, because why would we make the road simply better for developers to develop the road? Now, we're all capitalists. We understand that they want to go up there and build and make a profit. That's great. They just have to do it safely. And that may be a little bit extra disguise for them to connect Amy Heart Path on the road to do it safely, allowing, we have an 18-wheeler on our road every day. I mean, it's just blocking the entire road. So they need to make the necessary steps to do this and safely have access. And if we had another access to Amy Heart Path, 50% of the traffic in the one way and 50% the other, it's much nicer for the fire chief to be able to get trucks off the road straight through. And I'm comfortable with you. I know he was called away. I think there's an emergency. I saw him drive it off to that. So we had talked, and I know we express in the same respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this? Now, let me say that our alternate attorney is not able to be here this evening. And so I've been in communication with him to discuss what it is that I was going to say. And he's intending to be here at our next meeting, and we'd be able to give a more educated report as to what the legal implications are with respect to doing what you're proposing. I'm just, I'm not seeing how it gets done without there being some, what would in a normal, in a normal, in a multi-lot, major subdivision, the persons that are going to live there agree that this is how it's going to be handled. This is what the traffic patterns are going to be. This is where the roads are going to be. And we're doing that, obviously, after the fact. So I'm not sure how you do that without there being someone that says, "Yes, I'm willing for it to go through what is now the border of my front yard" in order for the road to be there. That's, again, my non-civil engineering opinion.
I just think the land is questionable. The land is going to be developed. There are other people there, so they should go through that undeveloped land and connect it to Two-Rod Way or one of the other roads.
If that person that owns that is willing to do that?
Correct. If someone says they sell a large tract of land on Amy Heart Path, they want to develop it, then that should be part of it. So they need to have access to Amy Heart Path and the other way around.
And so we would encumber that particular development with...
The developer for the cost, yes.
So what you just, what you folks were just talking about, how would that happen? Would that be the planning board, the council? If, what Mr. Humphrey is talking about, if they want to develop it, they're going to have to encumber the cost. So would that be an ordinance? Would that come from the planning board? Regrettably, our attorney's not here to answer that question. That's what I would ask him, that.
Right.
But he's not here. Do you have any insight?
We would need to direct the planning board that we wanted to deal with this issue. And they would return to us with, "Here's how we propose to do it," and we would say that we agree with that. In other words, it would eventually, it seems to me, make its way to an ordinance change.
Okay, so it would start the planning, it would start with this council asking them to take up this specific issue and bring us back a recommendation?
Yeah. I think it's reasonable to anticipate that there's going to be further development at some point on Amy Heart Path. So instead of waiting until that happens, I would agree with you. We should do...
So I'm happy to make that motion now.
Which would be?
To charge the planning board to investigate safety on Amy Heart Path and give us a recommendation on any future ordinances we may want to impose. I don't know if that's said right. Can you help me out with the wording?
Directing them to deal with safety, I think, would be, would be, their job is to ensure conformance with the comprehensive plan. So they would not be the only entity that we would involve in such a thing. Perhaps what we would do is to resolve that we, along with, we, the town council, along with necessary other players, that would include the police chief, the fire chief, the planning board, et cetera, would develop this approach that would be used by future developers on Amy Heart Path. And that would allow us to get to where Mr. Humphrey said.
Future or current, Mr. Humphrey? Future or current developers? I mean...
Well, I don't know all the developers that are currently working up there. I've been talking about them a long time. I guess it's halfway done. I don't know if there's, if the houses are available, because the plan on that, yes, I guess that would be helpful. Since he's the one that's in profit from the development, he would help with the safety checks. He potentially attached the road to the construction.
So I'm struggling with my motion wording.
Yeah.
There's a hand. I don't know if you want to take a hand?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kelly, I'm in 43 Amy Heart Path. Just wanted to comment about going back to the planning board. We went to the planning board when that subdivision was put in, that Hinter Way, to talk about safety issues and we, you know, expressed our concerns. I mean, currently, there's about 19 houses on the road. There's about 10 other blocks that have been sold and will be built. Approximately 40 to 50 cars going up and down that road every day now, not including building trucks, Amazon, you know, UPS. And those other houses are built and is one end is sold. You're going to be talking 90, 100 houses. We need to figure out, what is that number that you're going to keep this a private road, public right of way, and when are you going to really take our concerns? Because I feel like you can't just keep coming to get back to the planning board, get back to the town council. We're showing up. I think you really need to come up with a plan and this execute it and something that we all live with.
Thank you. Would you agree, or would those of you who live there agree, that it will require... will require ultimately a concession from each of the landowners?
We're already having lots of concessions now, I mean, we're getting stuck down the road, you know, people riding over, and people stopping to get down, the winter is even worse, you know, you cannot, the one-lane road in the winter is like a half a lane, so it's really becoming a problem, and I think, you know, we're willing to make concessions, and I know not everyone would agree with it, an exit out the other side, I'm at the end of the road, I get stuck, I would like to have another exit to get out, and I think with that, a lot of people on the road cannot have a one-lane, one-exit road, I think it's not safe, fire trucks can't turn around, there's lots in the road where you cannot get by somebody, so someone has to back up, it's a hazard. And the road's been being fixed by builders, but when they're done, it's, it's a nightmare. I mean, I've gotten stuck on the road with a hot hole the size of a car, and like kids on his school, so I couldn't be down the road. So people don't understand how hard it is to become this road when you have a bad winter.
Perhaps your motion would be framed around assigning this to both the planning board and the town's interim planner, is that the right name? The part-time planner?
Alison Ring.
Alison Ring. To develop a, an approach that we might use to begin the process. I don't, I don't, I don't have confidence that we can say at the outset that we know what the, the path we're gonna take is, no pun intended. But I mean, it's, it's, the, the reality is, this is something that we have to begin in order to determine whether we're gonna be able to succeed.
So Kelly, I hear your frustration, but I think we, the word is we need to begin here. So I'm happy to make a motion to charge the interim part-time planner and the planning board to develop an approach that begins the process of a, I was doing so well, of a plan for Amy Hart Path.
Second. Motion is made in second, is there further discussion?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get right to you.
Go to the audience, let the audience go first, I can wait.
Yes, sir.
Brian, I'm in one-on-one, Amy Hart Path. I work in facilities, having dealt with some of these types of things, I think the burden of all development, I, I don't, I agree with you that we need a plan, but I don't think we need to re-visit the wheel. Developments occur in cities and counties all over the country. I think plagiarizing those plans that are already out there, that a developer creates a development, it's a burden on the developer to bring it up to code, which means that, whatever that means for Amy Hart Path, I think that has to fall on the developer, not the individuals living on the road that are currently there, because they're benefiting greatly from selling land and all those other things, I, I don't think that that's unusual in other cities and towns, so.
But would you agree that that, that process, for all of you, those of you who are seated here and the ones to come, happens at one moment in time where there's a, a plan for the, for the road or the access or whatever it is, and we're doing that piecemeal after the fact, and you're saying, we ought to do it comprehensively, and I would agree with you, but I would say that requires comprehensive response from landowners who don't yet have houses there.
I, I think so.
Yeah.
I think it has to start that way. I mean, I'm concerned because my house is on the front of my property, so if I can see land, I mean, I could have a road on my front porch, so if, if this concerns me, but I also understand the same thing, and there are a lot of other things to consider here.
Right.
That's why, you know, if we're gonna put a development in the back half of it, they need to consider, how are they getting the evening out there? When they, when we grant them the access or the ability to create that development, the town council should look at it and say, what's your plan? Drop some houses in, create a lot.
Understood. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Oregon Joe, I'm serving for Amy Hart Path. How's your life going? I'm here. My wife and I, we have two small children, three months ago, my son had a losing surgery at hospital, a really big, first bill, you know, we kind of raised, lived on private road, it was a way down. We were losing surgery and had to complete the process. Not picking up anything, right, and the bottom of the blood, oh, I call ambulance, waited about fifteen minutes, it was blocked, empty. I put on my truck, drove to the end of Amy Hart Path, was fortunate enough, the night I came, I pulled in that driveway, waited for about thirty minutes until ambulance came. You know, that's a pretty serious thing that was happening, I completed, and I would have stood at my home, more than thirty-five minutes, trying to make an ambulance out, I wrote a thing, ambulance or fire truck, you'd be dead.
Okay.
So that's a big concern to me. And then, in a way, I reached out to the city, concerns and war regarding my property, and, and I felt a lot of, and I didn't know where, I contacted, it was, it was a little more, building official, and then I ended up talking to people there about it, and it just shrugged off, or anything about it, concerns with getting more onto my property. And I found there was nowhere.
Well, I am very sorry to hear that, and I understand the, the intensity of your, of your concern. We will, we'll move out on this. Yes?
The, the pachyderm, so to speak, in the room here is the cost involved. Obviously, it's, it's, I'd say it's over a million plus to, to fix the problem, and that's just a conservative aspect of my part. The other thing it's gonna involve is taking of people's property who don't want to agree to it, so there's legal fees gonna be involved, it's, it's, it's gonna be a real delicate operation to, to fix it. It's not gonna be a simple, this is the way it's laid out, this is what we're gonna do.
What I'm hearing, acknowledged, what I'm hearing is, let's put that plan on the table, and let's take steps two, three, and four, to get further down the, down the road and find out whether that's indeed what we, what we end up with. I, I don't know how to put a price on it, when you do it, obviously, after the, the houses are built, the, the pathway is altered in order to get from point A to point B, so, but I think we, what we're hearing is, we need to do something to define that. And if we define it, and you're right, and it's a million dollars, and we're looking for a million dollars to do it, and we're figuring out how it is we're gonna, who's gonna pay the million dollars? But I, I don't see any other way to address the fact that what we've got is a set of properties that are developed, and the, and the likelihood is, thanks to the figures that were provided in the back there, the likelihood is that that number doubles, and so it just becomes more aggravated. Alright, are you ready?
I'm just gonna say I'm kinda speaking from the hip here, because I don't know exactly to what length the zoning board looks at access to a property when they approve a new development.
Planning board.
Oh, the planning board, I'm sorry. But, I think, not to, not to lessen what, what these folks are experiencing right now, but I think that this is a problem that could presumably happen with other properties in town as well, that have private roadways to large tracts of land that could be developed at some point. And so, maybe looking at this from a higher viewpoint as well, coming up with a plan for the future, that the town can, taking into consideration, you know, improving roadways or, or, or making it so a developer has to improve roadways, if they plan on, you know, building on large tracts of land, I think it makes sense from a town viewpoint to.
You've used, you've used the term "large tract of land" a couple times. If that were the case, then the planning board's normal process would result in that large tract of land being considered as an entity before it's subdivided into building lots, the way the Amy Hart Path is already. And so, they would be able to do that more efficiently, but there, there are possibly other examples. I can't think of one, but that's one of the reasons that we're trying to get somebody who's, who's looked across the state to tell us, yeah, that happened in Charlestown or Foster or something, and here's what they did, here's how they, here's how they deal with it.
This, this, this occurred over a long period of time, this, this wasn't?
Yes.
This, this wasn't something somebody just willy-nilly went out and did, it just started with a few in the beginning, and then it just kinda got to where it is now.
Are you, are you ready to vote on this issue?
We're still in, we're still in discussion, correct?
Yes.
So, I, I think what people here sitting may wonder, we're gonna put this back to the planning board. How long reasonably is it gonna take to get it back here for us to look at this plan? I'll ask Carol, or, what's a reasonable amount? I mean, if I was sitting in that audience, I'd wanna know, when are we gonna be back here with this?
I don't know why you were singing that, but.
You know, that's hard to answer, because you're gonna charge the part-time planner that we use, task her with a job. I don't know whether that's something that she can pull together in a week and it's gonna get on the next planning board agenda, or whether it's gonna take her longer. In the world of everything going absolutely wonderfully, I would say a month's time coming back to the council, but that's if everything is easy for her to do, when she hasn't got other jobs that are already in her queue for her to do before she can pick up this task.
I think a reasonable amount of time, maybe two months. I mean, I think reasonably. I don't wanna hold you to it, but that's just my thought.
I think we need to start, yes?
Just one other point, do we need to look at a moratorium for further building on the path until something's resolved, before capital lines?
I'm.
Because it's just getting.
I under, I understand the suggestion, I'm not prepared to answer that, but I'll take it for, for review.
That would be a question for our attorney.
Right.
And we could reasonably have that answer at the next meeting.
Yep.
So that would be two weeks.
Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Go.
Just, can you repeat the motion? It just went on for a while, I'm sorry.
To charge the part-time planner, Alison Ring, to develop an approach to begin the process of a plan for the Amy Hart Path.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, and I expect to be back with, within the appointed time.
Thank you.
Certainly. The next item of business is a letter received from Jeff Manning, asking the council to consider again a section of the zoning ordinance, to align it more closely with another section of the zoning ordinance. The simple version of this is to say that Mr. Manning has been following the process, and I'll give you certainly an opportunity to, to describe that.
Jeff, thank you for your time, and I'm gonna just answer to you just quickly, I appreciate that. I wanna stress the point, discussion assumes that I'm not here for this, I hope you're able to consider, basically, I'm concerned about, at this point in time, I'm looking for a procedural determination on how to navigate a used code situation, so it's not just about me, but to me, and now someone else has been requesting a used code, which is part of permitting process. And, as you know, I've been trying to get a used code since my first renovation was April of twenty-one, that's all I'm gonna say about five days, because I'm not really to discuss that, and I'm not gonna take up all of your time and talk about me, but I've seen how this has impacted me the last year, and my inability to get an answer from, officially I've followed every step of the zone, requesting a used code, going, writing to the zoning board, reviewing two times, and it seems to me that if something's permitted, it shouldn't be shrouded in secrecy, if used code, that's, you know, is in section fourteen, three, forty-one. And all I've ever been trying to do until last year, to get a used code, that I have a particular issue that I'm concerned about, but at this point in time, I'm just trying to figure out, and I'm asking this council, in my first point in my letter, to consider allowing, you know, to consider giving us a remedy if one individual cannot, a requesting party cannot receive a used code, what do I do, what does anyone do? Use your mouth, and you're a friend of the state. The second point I thought was just sort of some illuminations on how perhaps these zoning boards could be more clear, you know, this is what's allowed, and it's not following this, this, you know, this permit, maybe you don't enjoy. So, I, I'm just trying to get an answer, and that's why I wrote to you, to appreciate your time, and, again, it's, I don't wanna really discuss the merits of my particular issue this, this evening, I don't think it's the main topic, I think we have to look at the big picture, so it's not just about Jeff Manning and Amy Hart Path, it would be anyone who's trying to get a used code that's in our zoning, it shouldn't be hard to add that. I can agree with you.
Thanks. And you've said it certainly more eloquently than I could have, but I, the reality is, I understand what you're saying, I don't have an answer yet, but this only reinforces the fact that neither do you, and therefore, that means we haven't thought it through in a way that is explainable to everybody. Basically, the idea is, a person follows our code and ends up with no answer. Is that fair? If, if it were?
Well, yeah, I mean, again, it's set up, I'm not here to talk about my case, but in particular, I'm curious as to what part of the ordinance allows accessory structures to contain bedrooms, not that predates them, it's funny though, it's implied, but I always saw the spirit of building zoning with one house a lot, that's the spirit of it, there's exceptions, and so, in trying to get some clarity in my situation, it's, it's been over a year, I still don't have a used code yet, so I, and, like all of you, I'm busy, I have three kids, I own a business, I'm trying to, you know, I keep coming back, there's one simple question that's kinda frustrating to me, and at this point, I don't know about my particular case, where it's even gonna go, so I think now, we need to look at the big picture, and that's why I wrote on Sunday, submitted it, because, again, if it's not me, it's gonna be someone else, and I think it shouldn't be this insurmountable wall, and the answer that's in our own zoning, or at least we should start looking in a way to make it more accessible, or just submitting a request.
So, this, not to belabor this, but this accessory structure was built, and as it was being built, it was, a bedroom was going in. So, there had to be an approval from D E M for the septic, so they had to get approved for a septic design that was building up for the bedroom, right? Because septic designs are based on bedrooms, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And the building's not two years old.
Well, I, with all due respect, I feel like we can get into the need about specific cases, and I think it could lose the bigger picture, which is how to form a used code. If I can get the used code, then I can follow up from there, if I have a penalty procedure to take after that, at least I have a used code to say I disagree with that, I don't have a used code, so there's nothing to appeal, it's like I'm trying to appeal a non-answer, and that's my frustration, so it's not so much my specific case at this point, so, we can talk about my case, but it's a lot bigger than that, and I think this whole zoning needs to be looked at, because we have a lot of future concerns in this town, and there's a lot of construction going on, and I grew up in this town too, like all of the many of us here, and, and I keep going back to one house a lot, that's always what I thought was here in the zone. Now, there's a myriad amount of other issues that we can get into those, or the housing, whatnot, I'm just trying to understand, I'm probably kidding myself over that, I'm trying to understand, where are we going with this, and, and, yes, I want my used code, but also, you know, someone here might come before the building, the officials office in two weeks and say I need a used code, and it shouldn't take a fourteen months.
Is it an oversimplification to say that when one enters the table with the name of something like bedroom, and looks for a used code for a bedroom and doesn't find one, how does one determine to what to assign that thing that they're calling a bedroom?
So, the accessory use table, table one B has eight codes. Number one is the big, well, we're talking about the things, garages, sheds, and alcohol companies, but there's, there's no, it doesn't say that within that used code one, that a bedroom is part of that, you know, an accessory structure is meant to be incidentally for principal use, if it has a bedroom in it, it's serving the same purpose as the principal use. So, I could argue that against the zoning board review, I'm happy to do that, but I don't have a used code to, to go to that.
To call it mine.
And, and so, if, you know, and I, I wrote a letter to the zoning board, they said, sure, we'll put it on the agenda, and then when I got to the zoning board meeting, remember, I was just told, man listed, it's not needed to be. So what does that mean? So what does that mean? Not with Jeff Manning, what does that mean anybody? He's just looking for an answer to that. That's why I'm writing it down.
Okay. Excuse me, just one second, Mark.
So, Michael, over there, about ten minutes in the room. So I have actually been, at least in the beginning, that Mr. Manning has asked a question of three separate bodies of government and has never been given an answer. Not even an "I don't know." It just lays there. So there are codes. They could be entered. It's oversimplifying to say, give the man an answer. That's the issue. It's not what the answer is, it's an answer.
Right. I'm only asking so as to be able to figure out where I look for what's missing. If you see what I'm saying.
I see what you're saying. But that answer has been given by my knowledge on three separate occasions.
Okay.
Can I add something?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
In fact, if there is no answer forthcoming, set aside it. Zoning is crystal clear. If it's not specifically listed as a use, it's not allowed unless the building official, when asked in writing, can provide the use code under which it was determined to be allowed. That has not happened. We haven't been provided the use code which further shows that this was not issued in accordance with zoning. And therefore, the town zoning code would indicate it's not in place. So what is the remedy at this point? If we've asked multiple times and there is no answer? I think zoning is pretty straightforward that it doesn't...
Section 14, 9 says any permit issued in conflict with the provisions of zoning chapter 11.
Yes. Yeah, it makes an explicit statement.
That's explicit.
And you are asking, what is the code? And you're getting no answer.
I have a right, and one of those rooms, right, a requesting party, under 14, 3, to say, what? I want a use code. I did that, I cited that, this particular structure.
So if there is no use code that the building official can provide, that in their determination, this was okay for zoning, then it doesn't apply. It's not specifically listed.
Okay.
You went to the planning board, I assume?
I also wrote that I first wrote to the building inspector's office and followed the zoning ordinance. That gives him a fifteen day...
Right. Yeah, I read your letter.
Yeah, and so it was over twenty days.
But they're the ones that come up with the codes. Who comes up with the codes then? The planning board gives us all these codes and everything. I guess it's their planner that gives it to the planning board.
Are you...
Yeah.
Following a line here?
No. I'm just trying to come up with something for Jeff.
Yeah, I was going to answer your question. So I followed, so I first contacted your office. And then having not received a response over the fifteen days of early, I wrote a letter to the zoning board.
Right.
To appeal for a determination. I did not interpret appeal as I have the formal appeal. I had nothing to appeal.
Right.
I did not get an answer. So I sent the letter to the zoning board. The secretary of the zoning board said, well, I'm second to that. So I will enter this on the agenda when we're done meeting. I was given an opportunity to speak. I'm grateful for that. But at the end of about fifteen minutes, it was recommended to set the matter off the agenda by member board voting unanimously and sending this up to the president. So I'm left with absolutely no due process, in my opinion.
Yeah, I know that if the building official denies something, then your next step is go to the zoning board.
Absolutely. And then you can, Gary, you can, like, okay, Jeff, here's your code. Thank you.
Right, then you can take it.
At least I have a concrete code to appeal. I can appeal a non-answer. So I'm left in... I keep saying "A," but we're left in this, no person's right. Where meanwhile, the building continues. So, you know?
I hope you just have to, I believe the town council is in a position to just reinforce the spirit of, look how consuming this one house a lot. You can't build two residential structures at the same time on one lot. It's against the spirit of Amity Park zoning.
I acknowledge that. Isn't it... Isn't part of the problem here that there's a debate without an answer being given as to what is that second house you're talking about?
It's more to be that a residential or a...
Right. I'm only saying that I'm understanding that... Go ahead.
So there's accessory family dwelling. We all want...
You can't build an accessory family dwelling.
You have to convert an existing structure to an accessory family dwelling. And that dwelling needs to be occupied. When it ceases to be occupied, a family member ceases to be in a guest for the family well. So what I... And I'm interpreting this. I think people are building guest houses on standby. So they're not accessory family dwellers. So that's needed here or there. I think I'm still trying to figure out. I'm just wanting to get a use code. No, seriously. You can start with a use code, then you have something to go to the zoning board. And if you lose, you lose, but you have something. Meanwhile, if you don't, you're out there in the ether and nothing's going on except that nails keep going in.
Okay.
So I handed Dick, and I think you already had it. Do you have something to add, Dick, to what I asked? The... What I circled?
Margaret and Jeff are right. When you go back to 1988 through 1991, house, voila. That changed in 91 and 92 for a variety of, I think, humane, humanitarian reasons. Helped people that needed an accessory place to live. Wasn't particularly well enforced at the beginning. But we've tried to grow with that over the years. We've got a situation here where Jeff is discussing, what happens now? What happened to two years when the building's already been there? And how did this happen? And why didn't Jeff give a response within 15 days? He got a, I think, I don't know, but I think 17 days for a variety of reasons. We don't need to go into here. So... But what the building official did after this is said, look, this vague thing called sleeping rooms is not permitted anymore. And they won't be permitted going forward. But that's the result of Jeff's matter, but it doesn't address Jeff's matter. So you may have won for the next guy that wants to have some relief, but he didn't win, prevail, or at least have an intelligent path for him to follow from this point forward. I think that's... That's correct.
With respect to solicitor, we're still operating in here and now.
And this is precedent.
So nothing's been changed yet. I mean, I knew that January of counseling, there was some talk about discussing sleeping quarters. I don't know where that went. I don't know what sleeping quarters is. But right now, we're still dealing with zoning ordinance that we have. And I feel that my request for a use code should be granted. It's not my request, anyone's request. And so if you want to change the zoning ordinance, that's a topic for a different day. It requires public hearings, and I'm all for it. People want to take the public input. But in here and now, I still feel that, yeah, I'm talking about my pitch, but I still feel that I'm entitled to a use code. And I get that, then the zoning board review says I'm sure I'm watching it and decide that. If there's something worse than...
For a town that did not provide a use code as a seven, then it's not... The permit is not in accordance with town zoning, and that was not...
So I guess the bottom line question, Jeff, is what is the remedy? What is the remedy to my first question? Jeff, when did I get an answer? What do you suggest?
I suggest that we tell the administrator that we want the building official to give you, give the person, a use code. I don't know any other way to do it other than to say, give a use code and then let that be challenged either by the person or the system. But somehow, I'm understanding finally, maybe, that what you're pointing out is the fact that we have a... Mobius strip that you just follow around and you end up in the same place you started every time because you can't ever get out of the... Out of the... I can't appeal anything for which the result is action. So therefore, I can get no action.
And I will say, if the use code is given, say, a use code one, then I'll just want...
Yeah.
And the building director said, okay, a use code one, then that's tacitly admitting that the garage's accessory structures can't have bedrooms. So that's going to open up a big question. That's another thing to consider. Because that, use code number one, contains a whole litany of structures. So if you're saying, in this structure in my situation, if I go down, it's better better. See the plans on the record? One bedroom, yes, we... So that's by admitting that it's use code number one, which is why I think we would be admitting that structures that we build that have bedrooms that aren't accessory family dwellers.
Can we get him an answer?
Can we frame a motion to, for the record?
Just quickly for you. Solicitor, so someone doesn't get an answer from the building inspector in 15 days, what is a person to do? Or what... Is there anything that they can do? Did they come here?
No.
Okay.
I'm pointing here. I mean, that's in the code, what they do.
Right.
The problem is, when he goes to appeal it, he doesn't get an answer there either.
He got an answer after 15 days, but it was a non-answer.
No, I'm saying if he takes it... Yes.
Your suggestion of asking the town administrator to have a discussion with the building official is something that gives me, is within the council's authority to do right now. That is, the zoning board doesn't... It's not a couple of direct to you. The building official is, through your town administrator. So there is a whole question here. Why didn't he get a use code?
Yeah.
And what is his legal policy? And I mean, that may be the starting point, just as you raised it, to ask the town administrator a discussion with the building official on what I... And give the council an answer. Do you force him?
It's an artifact of my upbringing. I know the people that work for me. So I can... And you're right, the zoning board is appointed by us. But, yeah.
Why don't you just make that motion to allow the town administrator to have the... To talk with the building official, to have him come up with a use code or some explanation about what's happening there.
I move that I direct the building... The town administrator to speak with the building official to get a use code assigned, and that will start this.
Second.
Can we... Can you... Can we add on to that motion? That we ask the building official for what his policy is when dealing with these sorts of requests? Like how he deals with these going forward?
I think...
I would rather have the result of this before we decide that we want to make a judgment as to how he's going about it.
Mr. President, I have one last question before you take this motion. So, and I'm grateful for the time. I've been here for the long years of that. But I... So if he comes back sensibly with, say, use code number one, he can have issued this permit well over a year ago. There's appeal, the formal appeal is a third day agenda. So we're well past that. So if he comes back and says, well, it's number one, which is way past my appeal, is that allowed that people take? Or do I have a ability if I disagree with your plan?
I think we would anticipate that possible response and make that part of what our answer back to you would be. In other words, I guess the... My answer to you is, we would not say, here's the answer. You saw it. Good luck because you're outside the limit of being able to appeal it, which was your point in the first place. So it's understood.
Mentioning this again to the council, that if you come back and say, a use code one, you are the town basically taking advantage of it better than you allow all sorts of accessory structures. So if fundamentally changes the zoning ordinance, I would argue. But if that's the best we can do, I'm grateful for something to... Something to think about.
I'm hopeful that I won't be coming back to you saying, my... I reframe my motion, but I'm ready to do that as well. Because it seems to me you're raising, and you've made the point repeatedly, you're breezing your issue, but it is a flaw or a concern about the zoning ordinance. Especially the use status.
I would just add, if you're asking for a use code, let it appear in the answer that includes a use code.
Including an answer that includes the none.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
So again, a reasonable amount of time would probably be two weeks for this to come back.
I would say, you know, it would be a reasonable amount of time. Depending, if he has to do any research, I'm not quite sure. So I would not push it to be that quick.
Thank you.
We're ready to move to new business. A request from Dionysus Acquisition, doing business as Carolyn Secant Vineyard for an annual entertainment license.
I refuse.
For plat 22 lot 8-9. I am going to propose to you that we receive this application and that we consider imposing requirements for its approval. And I base this on a conversation that I had with the alternate solicitor, Gerard Galvin. And I would propose that we receive it, gather information, and schedule for consideration for final approval at our next meeting. By the way, our next meeting sounds like it's got a pretty hefty schedule. So we'll make the commitment that this moves to old business so it happens sooner in the process. But we receive the application tonight. We gather information and schedule for consideration for final approval at the next meeting. What we impose are four requirements. Completion of all the elements of the application. Approval by the Agricultural Conservancy Trust of the requested use of the parcels per section 673B. An opinion of the zoning official that the proposed activities would be compliant with chapter 14, which I believe we already have. And a satisfaction of all conditions specified in section 6-7.4 of the ordinance, which are the conditions for entertainment licenses generally. I would propose that at that time, we decide whether to add any noise attenuation requirements. The noise attenuation process is a... Is tied to the plaintiff in the original case and the vineyard. And it does not involve the town. And so I'm reluctant to make that one of the conditions that we have to begin with. Yes, ma'am?
So I know that you're aware of Judge Justice Williams, as well as the appeal that they decided in litigation that you do not be required to do sound mitigation. So I'm providing the town with that. Basically, here, what?
Yeah.
Basically, out of the appeal of the neighbors, I can quote this here where it says, "The arbitrator stated that such testing and notifications impending are for headline purposes, not as a mandate to implement in such regulations unless the parties agree. There is a mediation or a settlement." It says, "Based on this, the arbitrator correctly that the arbitrator would be pre-possessed."
Right.
It included that there is no mandate to a negotiation or implementation of sound mitigation.
Now, my understanding, and I'm speaking without my attorney sitting next to me, but my understanding is that language is intended to say that the issue is between the two parties I specified and does not involve telling the town how to administer its entertainment licenses. Now, I am not unequivocally stating that, so I'll just leave it as my opinion. And I'll get to you in just one moment. But I want to be sure that it's understood. I'm not putting that in a separate category deliberately so as to not... understood. I'm not putting that in a separate category deliberately so as to not have to do it.
Wouldn't that be a requirement of everyone, the asking party, the anyone?
And, and that's my exact, that's my exact reason for this. That, I want to be sure that the noise attenuation requirements imposed by the agreement are in fact not incumbent on the town. That is my understanding, but I want to be sure that I'm right.
I'm sorry.
Let me just get to it. Yes, ma'am.
So I think it's important to note that she is reading a tiny specific part of what Judge Williams has said, to make it seem like they don't have to do any sound mitigation. And it's really important to note that the vineyard and we gave a lot of money to have an acoustic expert come and test concerts at the vineyard. And he has experience mitigating sound for other towns nearby. And he came up with a distributed speaker system that would increase listening enjoyment of the concert hours and reduce the sound by at least twelve decibels for the neighbors. And it's important to note that Judge Williams has said in his arbitration award, that he cannot legally force them to put sound mitigation system in, but that our recourse is with the town council. And your own entertainment license, if I may read it, you have said, "The term of the last entertainment licenses issued for the vineyard required the use of state-of-the-art sound attenuation techniques. And the distributed speaker system is a state-of-the-art sound attenuation technique because it was developed by moving actual real data from concerts at the vineyard that were studied by a sound expert. And he modeled how and where the sound travels. And they used the large speaker that they currently have to do that. And he determined that if he put small speakers emanating an abortion-like configuration from the stage, that the use of this distributed speaker system would improve the community noise and improve the listening enjoyment. So your own entertainment license has said that you want them to use state-of-the-art techniques. They currently are not using state-of-the-art techniques. That's why we're all suffering. And so it's really important to note that Judge Williams said that the plaintiffs have to come back to you again, you are the governing body, and that you can put requirements on the entertainment license. And, and I feel that it is your job to do that, to protect the neighbors. You all suffer. And I've been dealing with this for seven years, to try to make sure that we maintain our peace and tranquility in our town. And we put in a lot of money, and so did they, to get this expert to come up with a sound system. And so, this has been a terrible pandemic, but the only thing that I can think of positive is that we have beautiful, quiet, summer nights, man. Like, wow. Like, you're poor, she bought it. So we are asking you, and Judge Williams has asked us to ask you to, to take this sound mitigation system and make it part of their entertainment license.
That is, thank you. That is not inconsistent, I don't believe, with what I said. I'm not intending that we make a decision on that tonight. I'm saying that I'm not prepared to make that decision. Yes.
I'd echo you very much, on West Main Road. I am a property owner, the speaker director, and for that I've spoken with many of you off the record who have acknowledged that, yes, the speaker is appointed directly at my house, and while it is really loud, we'll try to do something about it. But year after year, after year, after year, after year, after year, after year, I kind of appear before you guys, and I'm exhausted. I don't have to deal with this anymore. I'm so tired of not being able to enjoy my property because of one bad actor. One bad actor. That's seriously year after year, after year, after year, after year, after year, after year. I said, I don't care what the town wants. I own this town, I will do what I want. And that's what they've gotten away with. I'm tired. My property right, my right to that quiet enjoyment of my property trumps their privilege to have entertainment. They have not once demonstrated that they have any intention to respect anything about our town, about our neighbor. I, I'm not complaining about their ability to operate a business, create metabolism, but I shouldn't have to not be able to hear myself think. I shouldn't have to not be able to hear my television in my house at full volume, because they want to have a concert. It's ridiculous. It is absolutely ridiculous. And how many more towns have been bedded over, because my life is painted from the vineyard, because we want to give them the ability to have entertainment. However, the town council had no problem in shutting down the Stone House, who spent tens of thousands of dollars to preemptively mitigate sound. We jumped with every hoof that the town council asked of it, and it still didn't give them an entertainment license, and you didn't care about how it impacted their business. Also, I remind the town council about how you were willing to shut down a cool blockers' building for a corn. They've always land, landed in the farm for 400 years because one person was bothered by the crop can. We have dozens of neighbors who have been begging this town council for seven years, to please do something, to please stop them. When you have a child that is not listening to the rules, that do whatever they want, you don't keep rewarding them with the privilege, the consequences. They shouldn't be allowed entertainment. If they show that they can comport themselves, and be a functioning member of a town, respect the town, respect the decisions of the town council, then you give them a little bit of rope. You say, okay, you can have one, two, three, bet. If you can handle that, and you cannot have angry neighbors continuously comparding the town council, but through your decision, as exhausted as I am, by having to deal with this issue, then okay, give you greater opportunity to have a vent. And if you can comport yourself, then give you more opportunity. You don't just keep giving them heart blanch, and do whatever they want, not to hear us for seven years, doing the same years around arguments about how this impacted my property, it impacted everybody's property.
Yes. Yes.
Look, ironic when I'm speaking on this point, when I'm here for a experience on the law.
Right.
I did, as a result of, I'm not the judge that asked this, I did this in the noise ordinance. That's actually quite moved, by what I found in the code, as a statement of public policy about noise in town. And I thought I might read it. It's a de novo statement, and I think it applies in this situation. Such is the deal to read. It is the declared policy of this town to promote an environment free from excessive noise, otherwise properly called noise pollution, which unnecessarily jeopardizes the health and welfare and the great quality of the lives of residents of the community. Without undue legal limitations or otherwise regulatory functional certain laws, it is not natural to control, again, is essential to the quality of life. I think that's the third thing to talk about, in the policy.
Yes.
So, the, 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 I'm declaring everything. So I think the, the mayor's understanding that the council, that the town, vineyard, and plaintiffs are parties who, that was then confirmed by court orders. And the monitor divisions, first, not hard on them, that the parties appear to agree that the entertainment license, in the manner of the issue given vineyard defendants, with the 2018 entertainment license season, shall remain in full force and effect, and with the same terms of admission as those issued by the town on May 7, 2018, through 2020. That is, the parties who were required to, say, successfully issued the same license for the consecutive two years, not only for those two years, in 2020. The license that the council issued, I think, that was put from, that were attached to the hundred and one standing, the license, it's through conditions, say, monitor phase. Conditions, this is in 2018, but the conditions of this license to continue use of state-of-the-art sound attenuation techniques. It will say that the council incorporates, let's see, I don't finish this, that the zoning official will determine, or actually the conditions of the charter is fully required, utilized wide discretion specified, detailed, and online, as well as authority, the way the conditions follow by the council of law. Prior to the license, for any entertainment events, the zoning officials shall be satisfied with required landscaping plan, and sound mitigation, equipment, and these techniques, which change their places, will communicate their satisfaction to the council. So if the council, if the parties stated to start art sound attenuation techniques, which it not specified, that they may pose discretion to the zoning official, to determine whether those were state-of-the-art. Since then, pursuant to the memorandum of understanding, it was the town's party, you correctly stated that the MOU then commissioned the other two parties. The vineyard defendants and plaintiffs will engage a sound attenuation expert, working with the purpose of writing down, establishing a plan, in call for, in the exclusive opinion of the expert, the sound attenuation and sound mitigation, in aid of set progress. Then, this is the issue that was filed over in our arbitration. And then, the sound data collection, set forth in paragraph two, above, shall be used for identification purposes only, of the parties here to infer a sound mitigation plan if necessary, and not for litigation purposes, unless otherwise agreed by the parties. When parties didn't agree, however, the parties did, in the sound expert, that they don't pay for, he did come up with the recommendations for the stripped-in sound system. They, we want, it's going to be exactly the same as with the, the entertainment license, the license, it says explicitly, that the council can make conditions for a license. I believe it makes specific reference to noise conditions. I don't have a, I have to determine. So that, since 2018, the last time that we acted on this, by virtue of the process set forth in the, in the MOU, as confirmed by Judge Williams himself, the, you now have information about state-of-the-art systems, distributed, distributed.
Sounds speaker system.
Distributed system, that's. So now you have additional information about what's a state-of-the-art system would be. Your ordinance allows you to impose it. You could issue the whole entertainment license as exists, and just amplify your commission for sound attenuation to powerful what the expert, the only expert who's weighed in on this, much more expert than a zoning official, says is the state-of-the-art. Finally, frankly, for all the millions of dollars, probably, that is spent on the law, if the period would spring through, this speaker system would be over.
So, if I could just speak, I'm on here. But I've, I've been following this just in the past year. Was busy at the school for seven years. And what I've noticed is, you know, we've had lawyers and arbitration, mediation, and, like you say, millions of dollars spent. I, I wrote on a document for the license for alcohol, that Carolyn Raffalian spent eighteen million dollars for the vineyard, and, and to restore it. It's all about noise. And I don't understand why you can't spend thirty to fifty thousand dollars to get a sound mediation in there. It just boggles my mind that, you know, it, it, there's noise, you know. Let's not make believe there's a charade, there's not noise. There's noise. People hear it. They need to mediate it. They need to mitigate it, excuse me. The town needs to move on. People's lives need to move on. The vineyard needs to move on. And we need to end this thing. And if it's going to cost thirty to fifty thousand dollars, my understanding, to put a sound attenuation mitigation system in it, it's a no-brainer. So, you know, I'm tempted to make a motion right now, to char, to, to make a motion that the vineyard put in a sound mitigation, attenuation, before we grant them.
May I remind you, there's a motion on the table, sir, to which you are coming.
But, right. I haven't made a motion. I'm just exposing, expanding that I may, later.
Right, well.
But it needs to end, so hopefully we can get there soon.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, the, the section in the ordinance that Mr. Anderson was referring to, it's a six dash seven point four B, conditions of license. It's "Reasonable effort shall be made by the licensee to project noise away from abutting property owners. Noise mitigation techniques and devices shall be used where appropriate, and as may be required by the town council." I think that's our right, as the town council.
So I understand, we have the, the right to put sound mitigation, period.
I believe, sir, that's precisely what I said, and we were going to wait until our next meeting to talk about. I agree with you a hundred percent, and I thank you for your input. I thank you for all of those who've spoken to this issue. I'm not prepared to do it tonight, and my motion accommodates the fact that when we meet next, we will decide at that time whether to add any noise attenuation requirements. I am in violent agreement with each of you, I think.
And just for your ratification, I was one, and Bob and I were the one that made the entertainment license, so we know what, what it's about.
Well, I'm just saying it for the record, for everyone that's here. And I, and I agree that we should have our council here, making the decision.
I agree with that, too. So did you get a second? Did I second that?
Yes. The, the motion is, again, receive the application, gather information, schedule for consideration, subject to four items of completion, and a decision as to whether to add any noise, noise attenuation requirements. Are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business is to receive from the Beach Commission for the council to, a request from the Beach Commission for the council to participate in national safety program and proclaim, May 23rd to 30th, as National Beach Safety Week in Little Compton.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And a request from the Secana Preservation Association, previously mentioned, for a waiver to the town's noise ordinance for a special 50th anniversary celebration of the SPA, to be held July 16th, 2022, on the Whitehead property located at One Ohio Road.
Abby, you're going to have sound attenuation, so you don't bother the seagulls on the island.
Well, I explained in my letter how we play.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion on that. Yes, ma'am. No, the, the motion's been made and seconded. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I made a motion to approve.
But you don't need to hear from me.
Unless you want to talk us out of it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is to receive proposals from qualified CPA firms to audit the town's financial records. A single proposal received.
Yes.
A proposal received from Haig Sahadi, the town's current auditor. This is the price proposal. And typically is three years. That is what we have. Financial audit engagement for year one, which would be our next audit in June 30th, 2022, is three zero thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The next year is three one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and the year after that is three two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. There are UCOA charges that are added to that of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. So the total price for the year, and to, to remind you, this is divided in a proportional fashion between the school and the town's budgets. The total is thirty-four thousand in fiscal '22, thirty-two The total is thirty-four thousand in fiscal twenty-two, thirty-five thousand in fiscal twenty-three, and thirty-six thousand in fiscal twenty-four.
Is that the only bid?
It is.
I'll make the motion to accept it. Make the motion.
Motion is made to accept the bid.
Second.
Just got uh second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business is to, uh, recommendation by the Charter Review Commission for fifteen proposed amendments to the town's charter. Did I skip something?
No. I looked this over. I thought it was um pretty well done. I had a couple of questions. I went over with Bob today. But I also think there's one other um charter um addition that the town council would like to make, but I haven't written up the uh proposal yet, so we'll still have to go back to the charter commission.
Yeah. Is the uh, there's a representative of the charter review?
Okay. Okay.
What's the timetable?
We have certified to the state by August.
So.
A little bit. I, I would say the first meeting in June should be when we shoot.
When we do it.
Yeah, okay.
Would there be, would there be a motion to uh set this aside and return to the next meeting with a more complete?
So moved.
Second?
Does that, does that mean?
Yeah, because by that time we'll, we'll come up with something and we'll give it to the uh charter review commission.
Gives us time to review them some more.
Let me, let me encourage you, counselors, to uh, to review these fifteens so that we can move promptly through them.
I think they did an excellent job. I went through it and I couldn't pick anything bad on it.
That will be remembered. Yes, sir.
So uh, I understand if you, you take this up again. I, I prepare to make a comment about just two provisions. And if, if I may, I've, I've had the chance to speak to those. In reports that arose at the charter review meeting when some of the council members were present, I knew a thing that had written in the file. And uh, so I don't know whether I can speak to those now or whether it was approved by which it was next meeting. It may have to do with the uh, section seven ten, one oh three regarding the town property and housing trust. I've got suggestions to amend section one oh three.
Is it, is that likely to be part of what is coming for? Or, you know, Gary. I, I'm thinking it would be, behoove us to um reserve our review until we see the revised product.
So there, in the section, it was not, it's not in public view, so I would know that I have to, trying to do this, we should know about it. You have all the information, you have all the information that, that's been presented, presented to the town council. Those uh, those amendments or changes that we suggested for one oh three and seven ten stand. This additional information that we would like to incorporate into the charter review commission package to go to uh the town council. So we, one oh three and seven ten is as we have proposed it. So I, I would like to address that now in a second.
Go ahead.
Second, Tony. So uh, I, I, I agree with, with Gary that the Charter Review Commission, I went to a few of their meetings early on, in the middle, and towards the end. And uh, I'm, I'm impressed with both their uh, their output, but their, the efficient and, and businesslike way they went about this. It was organized in a way that all the members were granted uh, a chunk of the charter to, to deal with. So they were all really invested in the process and in the, in the product, so I was very impressed. And uh, I support all of these, but I did have questions about their proposals for section seven oh one, which involves the Little Compton Housing Trust, excuse me, seven ten.
Yeah.
And uh, one oh three, which involves the uh provision with regard to town property. And uh, in the course of that, the, the question came up. Uh, the, the, the Charter Review Chair on behalf of the, of the commission sent an inquiry to the uh town solicitor with regard to the uh, the differences between the housing trust and the agricultural conservancy trust in terms of how they must or must not abide by the provision of section one oh three that's, that requires a town, town meeting approval for a whole array of real estate transactions. Uh, but it explicitly exempts, the charter uh, uh presently exempts the agricultural conservancy trust uh from the requirement that property transactions be approved. Whereas the current uh provision of seven ten specifically requires that the housing trust is, is subject to that, that they must go to the town meeting for approval of real estate transactions. Uh, the, the town solicitor in a letter concluded that uh, I do not recommend that the Charter Review Commission move to amend or change section one oh three. And he made the, the point, which I agree with, that uh, uh, you request, your request for an opinion understandably makes comparisons between the agricultural trust and the housing trust. Although the comparison is instructive, the comparison begins to fray when one considers the genesis of the two different trusts. And he makes the point that the, that the legal basis, the legal structure and, and history of the housing trust and the agricultural conservancy trust are, are quite different. Um, although they both, they're both are joined by the possibility that they have to acquire real estate. Um, the, the uh, the Charter Review Commission in section seven oh one, the housing trust proposes to add a phrase that with the approval of the town council, add that phrase to the final sentence that says the Little Compton Housing Trust shall be subject to the provisions of section one oh three of the charter. And they add the word not. So what they're suggesting is that the housing trust be treated the same as the agricultural conservancy trust with regard to the um, uh exemption from town meeting approval for the uh, for the, for real estate transactions. In, in their letter, in, in Mr. Hare's letter on behalf of the Charter Review Commission to the council, Mr. Hare writes, "I would only note that our recommended revision to section seven ten is intended to provide important flexibility for the Little Compton Housing Trust from a timing perspective for potential acquisitions throughout the year." Now, as far as I know, the housing trust in its seventeen years hasn't yet uh made a proposal for real estate trans, transaction. The only argument that I've heard is that, that it would, that they'd have to wait a year. Well, uh, in practice, so what, what the, what the uh, section one oh three says currently is that, and I won't read it all, that a whole array of real estate transactions, exclusive of those of the agricultural conservancy trust, shall be approved by the financial town meeting. The literal, the literal reading of that section appears to say that such a decision must be made at a financial town meeting. In practice, when we've done this a few times, I think we've done a couple of real estate deals on behalf of the town, Self Tower perhaps, maybe another, at a special town meeting. Uh, that is, uh, some of those may have been concurrent on the same day as the financial town meeting. But we've not necessarily, I believe, followed the letter of this in every case. My suggestion is, and, and I won't, I don't wanna give the whole debate about the, the housing trust, the agricultural conservancy trust. I do think it's premature, and I agree with the town solicitor in this regard. I think it's premature to make uh major changes to section one oh three at this time. It may be uh good to do it in the future, but I think a lot more discussion has to take place with regard to the respective, under current circumstances, with regard to the, the responsibilities and authority of the, both the agricultural conservancy trust and, and the housing trust. I will point out that the agricultural conservancy trust predated the adoption of the, of the charter by almost ten years. So there was a reason to put in the provision in section one oh three to exempt that because the uh, it was a legally unique thing that preexisted the charter. So I, I'm gonna jump to one oh three. The, the, the Charter Review Commission now proposes that we take out the clause regarding the agricultural conservancy trust exemption from the uh, they just wanna take out that language, exclusive of acquisitions by the agricultural conservancy trust. They wanna uh take that out. Why did they do this? They said because the L C A T, C T is not subject to the provisions of section one oh three. That seems pretty circular to me. Uh, but the, I attended the meetings of the Charter Review Com, the Charter, Charter Commission, the elected one back in the early nineteen nineties. There was a reason to put this in to clarify this. They claim that, that it's not clear now. There was considerable debate and the, the agricultural conservancy trust funds were frozen for, for the better part of a year over this question. So the, the reason why this is in here, I don't think it should be removed. I'll stop, but I think a, a question that can address the housing trust concerns would be simply to amend section one oh three, uh, leaving the language as, as it currently stands by saying that real estate transactions can take place at a financial town meeting or a special town meeting, which can take place at any time of the year on a couple of weeks' notice. And under the current circumstances, I think the, I think the housing trust should be, we've, we've given them some support. The council did the, the good, took the good step four years ago, providing them a means, so some income, dedicated income source. Just two days ago, a town meeting, the town supported it, giving them access to those funds. So for the first time, they have the resources to begin to develop a coherent plan for acquiring property. I think it might be wise to uh not amend these, except to add, without any harm, we can add the words or a special town meeting at the end of section one oh three, which will give the housing trust the opportunity to come to a town meeting or, or call for one at any time of the year to precipitate to uh act on a real estate transaction more expediently. And I think from a political point of view, it would be a good idea to get town support for a project by getting a hundred and sixty people to the town meeting. And uh, it would be a way to get consensus and, and show that there's support for a project. So all I'm saying is, I think the only way that section one oh three should be amended is by adding the words uh, or special town meeting at the end, and I would leave seven ten alone for now. Thank you.
Larry, can I ask you a question? I'm not, I guess I'm not following you.
Can't imagine why not, Gary, you have to read them all, but anyway.
Uh, with the approval of the town council, it says that the housing trust is gonna be free of restrictions from section one oh three. It says with the approval of the town council, Little Compton Housing Trust shall not be subject to the provisions of section one oh three, which if, and Mike can clarify this for me, under my understanding, that means if they see a piece of property and they say, and nobody buys a piece of property in this town in one week, okay? So they don't have to wait for the financial town meeting, but they, but it does have to be approved by the town council, which I think is correct.
Not, not, not at present.
Right. So the proposal, you, do you agree with this proposal?
No, I, I don't believe that there's any need at present to, to, what I, what I, at, at present, the housing trust would have to go to the town, to the town meeting.
Oh, so you want the housing trust to have to go to the town?
For, for the time being, but, or, or a special town meeting. Uh, I, 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 I understand their concern. I really appreciate their concern about being able to expedite a project. I don't think they're necessarily being, I don't know what projects they've had that have been hindered. Maybe there have been some. I don't know. I haven't he, heard one. Uh, as far as I know, they haven't done one. It's been seventeen, seventeen years. Uh, my, I am, I am frankly skeptical the idea of putting the council, with all respect, in the shoes of voters. What, what this would do is dilute the voters' authority that they currently have and just ban it to the council. That has its upsides, but it, it, it takes that authority away from the voters at town meeting that they, that they have for all other property acquisitions, except for those of the agricultural conservancy trust. So I'm reluctant to do that until I've heard uh myself more about what the housing trust's plan is for uh dealing with these issues. And I think, I've been to recent meetings. They've got new members. They've, they're educating themselves. They've done a survey. Now, now they have the resources to begin to put together a credible plan that they can present to the town. And I think if they did that, they would, with a good plan, we would mobilize and get support at town meeting for them. And, and for the near term, I think it would be a positive thing, frankly, to get consensus behind the housing trust from the voters. Uh, otherwise, it's gonna be a hot potato for the council if, if, if a controversial project comes up. But I, I, having said that, remember that the charter doesn't have to wait four years to be amended. It doesn't need to wait for general election. The council can uh call a general, uh, special election or, or charter, uh, review, charter amendments can be offered at next general election. I, I just think this is premature to, to fit, to fiddle with these things at this time based on the information we have. And I think it sort of might backfire on the housing trust, to be blunt.
Just, just a question. I know the answer already, but you, you do believe that financial town meeting is an important situation for the whole town? I do.
Oh, oh, I, I, I am, I am the, I am the, I am the hardcore defender of voters' rights at town meeting. I, I understand that it, it can be a problem, it, for the same reason the agricultural conservancy trust doesn't wanna make a big political, it, it will hold up deals, but a good deal, but for the housing trust can be, could be done at a special town.
Finish.
Yep, I'm sorry.
So as important as a financial town meeting is to prove all the funding and all the expenses of the town, we couldn't, it took us an extra forty-five minutes to get a quorum. So one of the flaws might be is if these people have something that's time constraints on it and we call a special meeting, are we still gonna have to have the hundred and fifty-five people for?
I, I believe so, but as a, as a former, as a former town moderator for eight years, I believe that the, some of the responsibility for our lack of quorum uh has fallen on some of us town officials who haven't, who haven't, and other citizens who haven't done a, a good nutshell prior to those meetings. This is a unique case. We, for the first time in three hundred plus years, we haven't had, we didn't have live town meeting for, for two years. So this was a tough year, this was gonna be a tough year and there weren't really uh, uh, a lot of controversial issues on, on the uh ballot. But that's really on us and it's gonna be on the housing trust to round up a hundred and sixty town people and have, and hope that they can get eighty-one of them to agree with them. That, that's, that's really our responsibility in a town meeting, form of government. If we're not willing to get a quorum, then we should get rid of town meeting. But I, that, that's not, that's not a reasonable obstacle as far as I'm concerned. Uh, the need to get five percent of the town, townsfolk to come out and vote on, on important matters.
I'm just saying that that may be a flaw.
Well, that's, I'm just making my opinion, Gary. So you, you guys will have the final word and I will, you know, uh, honor that in, in the end, so.
Can I, can I butt in?
Maybe Andrew would like this.
I just wanna butt in for a second as a council member on the housing trust. It's been my experience that during my time sitting on the trust over the last three and a half years, you know, this conversation has come up a lot, comparing us to the Ag Trust when I do realize, as Larry has pointed out, that we have a completely different structure legally. You know, they've got state enabling legislation. We're created by the town council. So it is very different. But I do think that. by the town council. So it is very different. Um, but I do think that, at some point, it is the wish of the housing trust to have a little more leeway in how we acquire property, whether that's through, you know, organizing a special financial town meeting, or if it's having approval from the town council, if we're able to do that, through, uh, through a charter change. That being said, we're nowhere near ready to acquire property, um, with the funding that we have, unless it is gifted to us. And I would imagine that if we do receive a gift of property, um, you know, there would be some leeway in terms of how much time we would have to act on such a, such a gift from someone in town. So I think that, I hate to say that I'm against making this charter change, 'cause I, I do agree with the spirit of it, but I do see Mr. Anderson's point, in that the trust isn't really ready to acquire property at this point, and if we were to acquire property, it wouldn't be through our paying for it, it would probably be through a gift or a request, and at that point, I think there would be some time to have a special financial town meeting or a town meeting to, to do it. So I, I think, I, I don't know, we can make this decision at another time, but that's my, my two cents.
Thank you.
So I just would like to say, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, you attended the meetings, you took the board's suggestions, uh, the Charter Commission thought very hard and clearly about the changes that we're thought to make. We had the input of Mr. Anderson, we had the input of the town solicitor, and the commission that you appointed stands by the changes that we're proposing to the town council. It's yours to deal with as you will, and whether or not you choose to put that on the left side. We did not disregard your opinion or the solicitor's opinion. We took it upon ourselves to think forward-thinking, uh. We did not get an accurate legal opinion about what the nature of agricultural trust property is, because it's listed in the tax book as property of the agricultural trust and not the town of Little Compton, so that would lead me and my fellow commissioners to assume that it is a private piece of land, that the, uh, housing trust is a different situation. So we stand by our recommendation to try and squeeze it from the burden of the financial town meeting. It's actually a moot point, as Andy pointed out, because it's not like you have, like you're, uh, have money in your pocket to go spend on that, but we have considered the recommendations very seriously, and this is what we're proposing to.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table.
Deferred in this discussion.
Set aside and may turn to the next meeting.
Any further discussion? Do you ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, which I will repeat, sets aside this package for consideration at the next meeting, and we're anticipating the possibility of changes being made to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you all. The next matter before us is a request from the police chief for retired Sergeant Alan Garcia to be, to be appointed to a position within the police department's Reserve Police Officer Program.
Motion to approve with all stipulations.
I'll second the motion.
If you need to.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is a request from Fire Chief Petron for the council to designate the week of May fifteenth to the twenty-first, first, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the town of Little Compton. As I pointed out earlier, I would like to propose that we combine this with the communication item, and that we designate next week, that would be, uh, May twenty-third to thirtieth, as, uh, Public Safety Professionals Week in the town of Little Compton.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Then a request from Councilor Mataronis to discuss actions of the Harbor Commission to consider setting a policy to require parking permits for commercial fishermen using the parking lot at Town Dock.
This came up close to a year ago. I think, as all of you know, that more and more visitors, we have to, Secana point, the more and more, the fishermen are getting squeezed for parking, especially the guys that are the trip fishermen. The day fishermen generally get there before the visitors come in, and so they get to park along the east side of the parking area. The problem that arises is the trip fishermen generally leave anywhere between two and seven o'clock at night, where a trip fisherman, for explanation, is a boat that goes out for anyway from two to five days at a time. So they stay, they make overnight trips. The problem is, when they come down there, all the parking areas are filled up, so they have no places to park. Now, and one of them was my son, where he had, several times, he had to bring his truck home and leave it at the house, and I gave him a ride down to his boat, and then, you know, when he came in, I gave him a ride back up to get his truck. That's fine, 'cause I live at Secana, but there's a lot of those guys that live on the other side of town. We have a couple guys out of Tivon that go out of there, so that, you know, it was a serious problem for us, and you can't. Long story short, um, we had some signage made up, so the east parking area, um, where the poles are, we put, uh, parking for, uh, commercial trip fishermen on the south side. We put signage up that says, uh, reserved for, uh, commercial trip fishermen on the west side, and on the north side, we put signs up for visitors, so we, we split the parking area up in half, so to try to alleviate some of the parking, uh, problems down there. I wanna step further and talk with, uh, the town administrator, and one of his thoughts was to either get, um, parking plaques or stickers for the commercial fishermen, if there was cars parked in the, where it's designated for the fishermen, that those cars would get tickets. The problem with that is the same thing on Rhode Island Road. People gonna illegally park on Rhode Island Road, 'cause the fee's only fifteen or twenty dollars for a parking ticket, and he said it'd be the same thing at the, uh, at the, uh, parking area. So I'm gonna withdraw that for now. I don't want any action on that until I, um, talk with the town administrator and the chief of police to go forward with that a little bit quicker, and the solicitor too, to get his thoughts on it. So I'd like to make a motion to draw that, come back to the council at some point in the future.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks. I mentioned earlier, uh, a new, uh, New Business Nine. I would propose and need a vote of your approval to add this to the agenda for assignment to the town administrator to deal with. This is spring roadside mowing, a single bid received.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next is, uh, sitting as the Board of License Commissioners, a request from the game club for a Class F-1 one-day beverage license.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then, in communications, we dealt with the first one, which is the proclamation of the Tiverton Town Council regarding National Police Week. The second is this item, an invitation received from the Battle Rhode Island Association to participate in an event at the Butts Hill Fort in Portsmouth for coffee and donuts at the fort on May twenty-first.
Motion to place this on the bulletin board downstairs?
Second.
If it hasn't been done so already.
He was inviting town officials.
Oh, it was, okay. Well, maybe the rest of the town officials haven't seen it yet then, okay? Maybe the tax assessors and the treasurer and other people wanna see it.
Well, if it's just town officials, then maybe amend a motion.
Second is a further discussion.
Are you sticking with that?
Yeah. Just put it on the bulletin board.
You're gonna pay for that.
I second the bulletin board.
Is there any?
We could talk about that.
Next item is consent.
Motion, a motion to place a consent calendar on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pay the bills.
Just one, one item on the bills. Do you need a separate motion for this? So the motion then, sir, would be pay the bills. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, is there a motion to authorize the administrator and finance director to correct a balance issue with the council?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Thank you. It being twenty-one hundred, there is no further business for us to deal with. I therefore declare the meeting adjourned.
I bought these little electronics on the top, flashing red eyes.
Seventy-five bucks.
Yes.
It'd have to be an audience chain.